It's on Facebook, but yes, but it shall be in the paper, I guess, if they print it, I don't know, but it's online.
Relaxing is what I'm doing, it's good. Yes, I do, you guys have taught me well. Alright, we're gonna call to order the two hundred and fifty-fifth session of the tenth council invocation by Water Commissioner Jim Nash.
You gotta turn the mic on, you gotta turn the mic on.
Dear Lord, oversee us as we perform the functions of running the city and making sure that we serve the people as best we can. Thank you for overseeing us and bless this city. Amen.
Pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, roll call.
Carter. Miller.
Eila.
Stramski. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
President.
It's President Health.
Okay. I will ask for authorization to excuse Councilwoman Stramski. I just been moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller. Eila.
Yes.
Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Six A's, no names.
There's nobody from administration here? Uh, I would ask that we would move public comments up.
This ain't here.
I need a move and support. Is there support? I just moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Eila. Eila. Taylor Burke, Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller. Six A's, no names.
First of card. Jose Obaris. Mr. Jose Obaris, three forty-nine, six eleven. Next. Oh. Dr. Lee. Thank you, thank you, Doc. Can you take the podium, ma'am? Can you take the podium, the podium ma'am, to speak for public comments?
First, I want to thank you for moving public comment up. Good evening to everybody and especially council members. My name is Dr. Lee Elsesser, and I have been a business owner in Pontiac for twenty-seven years come this November. And I own a business called the Jocelyn Chiropractic Center, which is located at ten forty-four Jocelyn Avenue. It's on the corner of First Street and Jocelyn, and it is a healthcare facility. Also, on the corner of First Street and Jocelyn is a building, or what I would call remnants of a building. And the address of that property is ten fifty-nine Jocelyn Avenue. It is owned by Mr. Nicholas Agro, who according to public record resides in Lake Orient. Mr. Agro has owned this property, as I see it through the Oakland County Property Profile since July twenty-seventh of two thousand and seventeen. And if I could, I would like to share with you some photos of that property. Am I permitted to do such a thing? Yes? I recognize through the public record that the taxes are paid up to date. However, I was told by a city official that Mr. Agro has been told to clean up the property, which meant taking down the cement walls that remain erect, as you can see in these photos. Due to this semi-structure, it has become an attraction to some homeless residents there that I have seen urinate, have bowel movements, sleep there. And then what happens is that you have children that are over playing in that same area. I believe the city has given, it's my understanding that he was given until a certain date, which I thought was around Memorial Day in May, to have that site cleaned up. So I believe the city truly has given him adequate time for Mr. Agro to follow through with the city's requirements. At this point, I am asking what recourse the city has and if they intend to use it. Okay, thank you for my three minutes.
Sorry. Alright. Okay. Luke Holzberg. Mr. Quincy Stewart.
First of all, thank you, President, for moving up the discussion. Um, I'm just here to talk very briefly about block clubs. I think that the total dependence upon city government to do things we've seen over the years has been not as well as we would like it at best. Block clubs are a way of organizing block by block and getting people together to practice self-determination. As a president of the Crestwood, Astwood Block Club, we've done some things over there. And one of the things is getting Astwood renamed or named in addition to its name, the Dr. Roy V. Cooley, a street named after Dr. Roy V. Cooley. Most of you don't even know who Dr. Cooley is anymore, because most of the people who knew him are either my age or older or not here anymore. And it's very, very important that we recognize Dr. Cooley because he was a giant in this town. The things that he did has gone largely unrecognized. So one of the things that we're doing over there is to get Astwood named after him. He owned all of that land before the whites, if anybody knows the whites, the North Crosses, all those people on that back street back there. He owned all of that property at one point. And all those people bought that property from him. Dr. Cooley, of course, his family owned the cornerback in the west, Cooley's General Store, those of us who can go back that far, remember Cooley's General Store. Uh, Dr. Cooley treated many of us, brought some of us into the world. And to forget Dr. Cooley, no, and the other people like, you know, Waterman and other, Bill Waterman and other people, we cannot forget these people that we're standing, struggles that we're standing on. So it's very important that we, that as a block club, we didn't have the block club over there, then we would not have been able, no one would think to do that. So I'm recommending that people all over the city begin to think about the block club concept, food co-op concepts. These are the kind of concepts that can cause us as a block or a street or a series of streets to begin to organize from the ground up and stop this collective dependent personality disorder that we have on city government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Candy Anderson.
Good evening, and the struggle for Black Democratic human rights continues. The topic of my address this evening is George Floyd's protest result, no police reform. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, George Floyd, a black man, was sadistically murdered by racist killer police Derek Schoen. After Floyd's brutal murder, protests and unrest erupted across America for months, demanding sweeping police reform. Many demanding defunding and dismantling of the police, period. Joe Biden, our president, campaigned on major police reform aimed at holding police more accountable for violence in the line of duty. Just like Dr. King's speech, "I have a dream" is deferred, the George Floyd Police Reform Act ended last week, deferred to Neverland. Indeed, a bipartisan group of lawmakers led by two black senators, Democrat Cory Booker and Republican Tim Scott failed to reach a deal. Yes, there was no agreement and no mass protest response by white supporters with Black Lives Matter signs. According to a recent USA Today survey, shows that eleven months after George Floyd's murder, white support of the Black Lives Matter movement has fallen while white America's trust for law enforcement has risen. The survey highlights that the majority of whites have never supported the Black Lives Matters movement, that white support peaked last year at forty-three percent and is now back down to thirty-seven percent where it was before Floyd's murder. One writer says, as long as sixty-three percent of whites, nearly two-thirds, don't support Black Lives Matter, uh, it makes passing police reform very, very hard, to say the least. What's real clear here and the bottom line is, most whites support Blue Lives Matter, white police including their racism. Indeed, the majority of whites historically have never supported Black Lives Matter, especially the lives of black men. You see whites would only support police if George Floyd was a white man, calling out to his white mama to save him as a black police officer was killing him with his knee pressing down on his neck. You see whites would only support police reform if Breonna Taylor was the white woman where black police entered her home with a no-not warrant and murdered her. You see, far as the majority of whites are concerned, enough is enough for y'all's Black Lives Matters protest against police racist law enforcement. We ain't supporting no George Floyd police reform legislation. So the blacks folks, go to y'all churches and pray, keep hope alive, go eat some good food and play the lottery, because we got white police back. The struggle continues.
Thank you, sir.
This is my first time here. Thank you for having me. Play a little video. Just for the sound. Okay. Well, then I'll get right to it. I'm trying to find a way to stop illegal drag racing on Highwood Street in Pontiac. I live three hundred, I live less than three hundred feet away from there. And it's an everyday occurrence where people are drag racing, partying at Shram's Pick and Pull, and it goes on all night long, it goes out, it goes on however they want to do it. So my suggestion is, would be speed bumps for Highwood. And I think that would solve a great deal of problems. I still, my opinion is that Shram's Pick and Pull is allowed their parking lot to become an attractive nuisance for people that want to, that want to congregate there and drag race. Dangerous. It's, um, it's ruined our entire summer because every day, every night, there's drag racing on this street. The cops come, they let them go, they can't do anything about it. And this is where they told me to come for help, so. Any suggestions? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Darlene Clark.
My name is Darlene Clark. I come as a citizen, not a political person. I come as a longtime resident, sixty-six years, born and raised in Pontiac. I have a petition this out to help communication with council, communication with the mayor, communication with the city. I have petition out so the people can say, we are concerned. The one thing that has the city of Pontiac with all this, it's not so much as a drag racing. It's the absentee landlords of these properties. These properties are not in their name per se. They own the property, but it's known by the city's name. It's not known by the owner's name, which is a problem. Because our reputation is not that of the ghetto. Our reputation is not that of the hood. We have very strong, good people here with or without an education. Pontiac is a family. And I am a child of Pontiac. I'm not lost for words, but I'm on a timeline, and I think that's why in my mind, this is, I don't know what to say next. I'm asking you guys, please, these petitions is not to be turned into a battle, these petitions to say simply, I hear you, I want you to hear me, I want the city to hear me, I want the council to hear me, I want the mayor to hear me. People pay taxes, people pay rent, people invest in their homes, in their land. But then you have these absentee landlords who come in here and they're not investing in anything, they're gathering up the property. Some people say they're trying to gentrify Pontiac. So far, that's what it's looking like. We gotta stop this, you guys. We deserve to live like we're decent human beings. We deserve, if we pay our taxes, we deserve the same respect of not more than these investors. Just because we don't have the money of these investors doesn't mean they should not stand a column.
Good evening, Pontiac, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Um, I wanted to first of all say thank you to the council and the mayor for attending the Hubert Price Ceremony that Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner Jim Nash hosted. We had a beautiful day. And today, for those who may not know, is the Honorable Hubert Price's birthday. Um, one of the things that he used to say about Pontiac is that Pontiac is the center of the universe. So, um, shout out to the Price family, and thank you again, elected body. All right, Dr. Price. Um, next thing I want to say, concurrent with what was said about Dr. Cooley. Um, I didn't know Dr. Cooley, but I had the honor of posthumously recognizing him. And he was a, he was also a former Oakland County Supervisor, which was recursive to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners that Attorney Boznik, the late Hubert Price and Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner, Jim Nash were also part of the Board of Commissioners. So I want to share that little history. Um, I want to say that we do need to honor those living and those who have passed because um, it's important that we know from whence we came and the contributions of all. Uh, I want to say thank you again to the council and the mayor for implementing, it looks like, the Pontiac Star Recognition Program. So I can't wait till you all start doing that, that's going to be good. And then last but not least, I wanted to encourage everyone out there, absentee votes or absentee ballots out there. Um, District One, we've got like eighty-eight votes, ballots that have been returned. It's important that we exercise our franchise. A lot of people have died for us to have the right to vote. So, um, let's vote. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and our voters out there in the TV lane. First, I would like to thank you all for doing the hard work that y'all are doing here in the city of Pontiac. Secondly, I bring y'all respect and grace from our prosecuting attorney office, which is Karen McDonald. We're doing a Justice Resale Fair here on October sixteenth from twelve to four at Murphy Park at the Cricket Field here in Pontiac. And we are hoping that all of y'all will come out to this fair to see what our new prosecutor attorney and the things that she has to offer and help you all to keep y'all from going to jail, getting pulled over, and things like that. So I need you all to show up on October sixteenth from twelve to four at Murphy Park. We got good food, we got a lot of people coming out, this jocking, that lives and gonna be hating food from our own city of Pontiac. So I need y'all to come out and support our Pontiac people that's about to help the prosecutor attorney with this affair, okay? Thank you, and may God bless.
Thank you, Pro Tem Carter. Now, we need, are there any amendments to the agenda? Yes. I mean, something maybe, it was, um, so that needs to be placed in the presentation. Is there a, a score? Oh, so, um, yeah, so the clerk gets to call people. So, is there a motion to approve the, as it is? Move by Carter, is there support? I just moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Stramski. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter. Miller. Seven years.
Agenda is approved. Now, I need a motion to approve the minutes from September fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. Supported, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter. Miller. Eila. Stramski.
Okay, this one's the side number two, I need a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Supported, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Waterman. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller. Eila. Stramski. Taylor Burks.
Thank you, agenda is approved, which brings us to some submitted reports. Uh, cable report is in the notes, just to recap for my colleagues, we asked them for three different proposals. One was the basic, just to move back into city hall. Two was a better version, took us, uh, some better equipment. And then the third version of the Cadillac Land. If they had, so, uh, Mr. Brown, did, uh, create one. I don't know before, I'm not so, um, number one.
Yes, thank you, President, uh, and, um, and in the fact, as I did state, things that finance, uh, committee, it's talking detail, maybe, what works, and relates to amendment to, um, the open streets, and as it relates to sentencing.
Thank you, uh, which brings us to recognition of elected officials. So, alright, which brings us to agenda address. Our agenda address today, which brings us to item number five, we talked in detail about this last week, is there? Supported, any discussion? Seeing, uh, roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller. Eila.
Yeah.
Stramski. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Seven years.
Okay, now, item number six.
Meeting Council President, members of council, Madam Mayor. Uh, Council President, item six, eight, nine, nineteen, all deal with any common issue of your permission, I would just give a brief outline of the status of this considering last week's presentation. Item number six, the basis of the taxes importance. Quick summary of what's presented to you tonight is a payment of taxes. The entire project is purchase and acquisition of a school property and rehabilitation that property into seventy-six units of affordable housing in the city. A question was asked last week regarding what is the specific benefit to the city, and I believe, Council President, you were savvy enough to ask that question. Uh, I'm going to distinguish this to the Carriage Place Project, which the city approved and is moving forward with. In the Carriage Place Project, we approved a forty-year payment in lieu of taxes agreement. In the Carriage Place Project, we approved a forty-year payment in lieu of taxes agreement, um, ordinance. Uh, in that particular project, we also agreed that we would provide five hundred thousand dollars of CDBG money from the city to contribute to the project. Uh, and so in that case, we were approving a forty-year ordinance, which is allowed under the statute and contributing, um, the city's capital. In this particular project, we're not contributing any capital. We're not contributing CD, CDG funds or otherwise. We would be receiving instead, under the option agreement, six hundred thousand dollars of capital directly to the general fund of the city for the acquisition of the property. And so it's quite and substantially different than what we have seen and done in the past. The ordinance that provides for the payment in lieu of taxes would be a part of the financing structure. And each of these projects, as we've seen in Carriage Circle and others, uh, it includes a payment in lieu of taxes agreement that is financing from the state of Michigan. The reason this one is projected at forty-seven years is in large part because we're demanding of Community Housing Network to contribute to the city six hundred thousand dollars of capital. That financing would be absorbed into the Misha financing, uh, going forward. Um, so the length of this seems a little bit long, but it is based upon the financing structure that you have with every agreement. Now, what's interesting is you'll consider in, uh, item number eight, and just speak to that very quickly. And i- item number nine for the agreement is we've taken great care to make sure in the last three agreements that we don't have the old process of management and developers that do these and then just walk away. We now have agreements that are before you tonight, the same that we use for McCarroll School, uh, and Carriage and others in the last two years, where we have a great amount of teeth in the agreement, meaning we require annual reporting of management. We require annual reporting of incidents on the property. We require the management company to provide a security plan. We require, um, reporting on that security plan. We require the ability for this city to readdress the payment in lieu of taxes and the agreement in the event that there is a default, meaning that they have repeated code violations or ordinance violations. This is something that's been very important to this council, very important to the mayor, to make sure that these agreements have teeth. Meaning we're not going to agree to a payment in lieu of taxes without the ability for the city to really aggressively enforce what our expectations are. All of that agreement also includes the requirement that they pursue employees from the city, that they pursue contractors from the city that have very specific reporting requirements. So what's before you tonight, item number six is the ordinance. Item number, um, eight is the resolution to schedule a public hearing on whether the council would consider selling this piece of property for six hundred thousand dollars. Um, item number nine would be a consideration of the agreement. And other, item number nineteen is the rezoning that was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission has recommended that. Mr. Gustafson, your outstanding planning manager is present tonight as well, if there's any questions about that. The last comment I'll make really is about should we set a public hearing as we attempted to do last week again. Uh, this particular property, this, the school building, we've limited and restricted the property such that there's really no access because of the amount of mold and the amount of damage that's on the property. Uh, Community Housing Network has signed temporary access agreements that protects the city from liability to investigate the property. It is clearly a demolition. It is not savable. Uh, that demolition requires the abatement of everything's in there. And what abatement means is you have to get rid of the asbestos. You have to get rid of all of the environmental problems. We estimate that easily three to four hundred thousand dollars of cost that would incur to either Community Housing or to the city would be absorbed by having to demolish the building. Uh, if the city were to choose to not to pursue going forward, at some point in the future, if there wasn't a buyer in the same credibility as Community Housing Network, the city would likely have to absorb those costs. And so we're looking really at a benefit to the city, going back to Council President's question of what is the benefit to the city. The city's really going to benefit by not having the liability of this. They'll not have the ongoing maintenance, which is a DPW cost while they're doing their diligence to get the financing done at the state level, um, and their approval process. Uh, they're agreeing to accept the liability for the property, uh, going forward, which would be if there is maintenance or other issues that cause liability on the property, that Community Housing Network would absorb that. Really protecting the city as they do their work to build these seventy-six units. The city would get six hundred thousand dollars. They would also get, over the life of the pilot, um, almost seven hundred thousand dollars in payments in lieu of taxes. Now, this property is currently not on the tax roll, so the city's getting no dollars from the property. Now, that could change. You could find a different buyer that would come forward. Uh, my experience would be that they would seek a very similar project that would be affordable housing. It would be Misha-based and they would be asking for the same type of pilot agreement. So the benefit to the city is you get the purchase price, you get the protection from liability. You don't have DPW having to maintain the property. You don't have problems with snow and ice removal. Uh, you get the long-term payment of close to seven hundred thousand dollars of payment in lieu of taxes and you get very much needed seventy-six affordable housing unit. We provided in the package before that there still continues to be a tremendous need for affordable housing, um, in the community of, of Pontiac. You also get one other added benefit, which is they're agreeing to build a community building on the site and in the project. And that community building would be available to you, would be available to the city, to our youth, and most importantly, to the public to use. And so where it could be scheduled, it was not conflicting with the project itself, uh, the community could use that community facility. And so there is a significant amount of benefit here. And I'm not picking on the Carriage Circle project. It's an awesome project, but the difference is quite striking. Um, I'm not standing before you saying, can you contribute money from the city to a project? I'm saying, can you accept money? Can you accept six hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars in future property tax income on a property that is clearly obsolete and clearly in need of demolition, uh, and move this forward? And so, Council President, the procedural step on item six would be to hold the first reading of the ordinance. If the council is so inclined, I'm only speaking to the others so you don't have to hear me talk again, Council President. Um, on item number eight would be if you're inclined, there is, as we said last week, a deadline with the state. It's not a deadline from you or from us or from, from anyone else. The state has an October one deadline of being able to apply to Misha for the appropriate funding for this project. They would need to have an interest in the property through the option agreement. I know this council is very kind enough to attempt to hold this meeting that just didn't work with schedules. But if the council was inclined, it would be, um, critically important if they could schedule a public hearing in the form of a meeting on Thursday of this week, and if they did that, they could consider the option. Item number nine is the agreement, again, that has the language. I would pledge to continue to work with Attorney Sharp, who's been excellent in this and making sure that the language, um, contains all of the teeth that we want for hiring and for oversight and for management oversight. And then item nineteen, when you get to that item, Council President and members of council, um, that is the recommendation from the Planning Commission that we unanimously received and recommended to you to rezone the property so that the zoning is appropriate for seventy-six affordable housing units. Uh, so that's what's before you. The most critical, of course, is the first reading. And if the council is so inclined to attempt to try to meet that October one submission deadline to the state, it would require that the council would schedule a special meeting, um, before October one, and October one is on Friday. So, um, I'm here for questions and I can answer anything that you may have. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Before you, uh, get there, um, I'm getting reports that the Facebook is ringing. Um, and it's, uh, can't be heard. I don't know if anybody's, uh, tapped into it, um, in order to, uh, look at it. And then I'm also getting calls, uh, that they can't hear, um, some of the council people's microphones. So, uh, if IT can work on that. Um, so what you're telling me, Mr. Gibbs, is that item number six needs to be read as a first reading and, uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So technically, the first reading occurred last week. First readings do not require a vote at a council. That's why you just approved the water, um, ordinance. Um, that first reading occurred last week. I published the ordinance summary, um, in the paper. So the ordinance for the water could be approved, which you already approved. In this case, I did not publish the ordinance summary because you haven't had the public hearing. Had you had the public hearing, then I would have sk- um, published the, um, ordinance summary. So it kind of all, kind of hinges on having the public hearing. So, kind of.
So.
Turn your phone off.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, Mr. Clerk, for clarity's sake, uh, the, if we vote on item number eight today, then you would schedule the public hearing for item number six for next week?
See, I believe the public hearing needs to occur before October first.
Through, through the chair, answering a close question and, and thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Clerk. I, I didn't realize the process, but yeah. If the council were to vote on item number eight, the request is that it would be set for Thursday of this week to attempt to meet the ac- very strict October one filing deadline of the state of Michigan. And if I'm hearing the clerk right, then I think both items could be scheduled simultaneously on that date. I'm looking at the clerk and he's nodding yes. I'm nodding yes as well, Council President.
Okay, so procedurally, item number eight needs to go before item number six?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm just going to open it up for questions. I just want to hear the procedure. Um, so, uh, any of my colleagues got questions or discussions?
Yes, Mr. President, that was.
Go, go ahead, Councilwoman Waterman, then Pro Tem Carter.
That was my concern, uh, as it relate to eight and six. Since we didn't have the public hearing, how could we deal with number six? So now that's been cli- that's been clarified. I'm okay.
Okay. Are you finished, Councilwoman Waterman? Okay, uh, Pro Tem Carter.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I mean, I'm looking at and reading and, and, I mean, to me, this was just a white element, elephant that shouldn't even be even dealt with. First of all, there wasn't a property tax, tax after David even taking out forty-five days when Mr. Stevens added. So therefore, nine, ten years ago, it should have been on the tax roll with him paying for it. Now all of a sudden, we in the process of, of giving a piece of property. In my opinion, this property is worth giving away for one dollar to them. And then, then it can come back later on when they have financing, because there is no way we, we need to give them something and then go ahead and pursue financing this over a period, over a period of forty-some years. It has no benefit at all to the city, whether the property even gets built or not. Uh, this, this is a mute point you can talk about. The property needs to be sold first, give to them. If, in my opinion, I would give it to them for a dollar and they could have the property. They could file the, the, the property taxpayer after David. They own the property. They're responsible for the property. Then come back with, with, with a, with a solution that, uh, they might want to seek, uh, the city or, or state's funding for their property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Councilwoman Miller.
I'm not mistaken. Did I hear you, uh, CDBG funds? How much CDBG fund were you asking for?
So for this particular project zero, I was only referencing that in prior projects, particularly the Carriage Circle project, we did grant, um, five hundred thousand dollars of CDBG to support that project. That was in partnership with, um, Oakland County. So Oakland County was incentivizing that. I made that reference, uh, Councilwoman, to, to recognize that we were not doing that here, that there is actually zero contribution from the city, either through CDBG or from its general fund. The only thing that we would be contributing, um, if the council would, would elect to move forward, would be that payment in lieu of taxes agreement, where we would collect approximately thirty thousand dollars a year over the life of the, of, of the pilot.
My, my only comment, I, I just want to make a comment and I would just want to be on record why I can't approve this. Because God knows, uh, City of Pontiac need affordable housing, but I don't want to do it on the backs of the cities, citizens and the taxpayers. And that's the problem. That's the concern I have with this project. First of all, I don't think we should ever bought the project. Why would I buy something that is going to take millions to build? Uh, it was stated, uh, at least four or five million dollars. There's tanks underneath that school. It's, 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 it was no, it was part of the Phoenix deal for the audience out there. And, and why did we buy that property? I mean, I used to go there. There's nothing personal about it, but why would you buy something that is no good? And now you're talking about average eight. We can get some money out of it. That'd be nice. And I'm, I'm like, Carter, let them find a buyer, but I am tired of people coming to the city and putting the taxes on the taxpayer. It's enough of this. Forty-five years? More likely I'll be gone. Probably most of us in here that's up to some age. I mean, come on, this is, this is not right. And that's my only concern about it. Housing, yes, we need it, but not at the expense of the taxpayer on their back.
Council President, if I could just respond briefly.
I'm going to let, uh, all the councils, uh, speak and then, and then if you want to respond, uh, anybody else from council?
I have a comment, Mr. President. Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gibbs, but from what I understand, the Purdue School was given back to us by Mr. Stevens with the Ottawa Towers deal. And if we don't do anything with it, we still, if we do not approve this, it is going to sit there and it is going to continue to be a blight to the community if we do not let CNH take this over and turn it over, even though there is a forty-five-year pilot program, which does not mean we don't get any money. It also doesn't mean that we spend any money. It's going to be that we're going to get money. We're going to get thirty thousand dollars a year on property that we don't use, property that we haven't gotten any money for since two thousand and nine. I sat on the facilities board that, um, closed that school because we didn't have any. So since two thousand and nine, that school has been closed and we haven't gotten a penny from it. Am I correct, Mr. Gibbs, or am I wrong? Or if I am wrong, please explain what I'm wrong with.
And please, and through, through the council chair, answer your question, Councilwoman. You're exactly right. Um, and as, as Councilwoman Miller alluded, the city did reacquire that property as part of the global settlement with Charles Stevens. Uh, in that settlement, which was, um, you know, approved by the council, approved by the mayor, approved by me, uh, we, we were, we were rushing to avoid a litigious situation. We all know that. And, and there was a, 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 a dollar amount allocated. So right now, the city owns the property. Uh, uh, it, it's been offered for six hundred thousand dollars. I'm looking at our partners from CHN. Um, and quite frankly, because we demanded it of them, because it's only fair that we would say if the city had to allocate six hundred thousand dollars as part of that settlement, we should give that money back. And that's why we've said six hundred thousand dollars. And so you're exactly right. If this deal doesn't happen, it doesn't mean, I mean, very honest, it doesn't mean another deal won't happen. Um, but what it will mean is that the property will sit there, um, for another extended period of time. Uh, it, it took Community Housing Network, um, nearly a year to develop the plans that would reasonably accommodate that they could do this. Um, it's a very, very difficult scenario, and so the property would sit there. Currently, it's generating zero tax dollars. To further answer your question, um, has been generating zero tax dollars for some time. Um, the pilot would allow us to, on its commencement, to start collecting it almost thirty thousand dollars a year escalating, um, two or three percent. Uh, I don't know the exact number, every year. It ends at about sixty thousand dollars a year in property taxes that would be paid towards that site and we would have that affordable housing and the elimination of the blight. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. It also answers my question as to, we would be much further off going forward with this property where we can get money back. They can correct the building. It's not going to cost the city any money to correct the building. And we will have seventy-five homes for people who need homes in this city. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to speak to this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will recognize you after I go through, uh, all the council people. Anybody else from council before I go back to Councilwoman Miller? Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Miller.
I just got two questions. Own a home here and do you pay taxes? That's the question. Now, when you guys, when you own a home here and you pay taxes, you can talk. When you don't, really can't talk. I know for a fact, citizens of Pontiac have been, it's too much. We got businesses around here are rolling. I pay more taxes than they do. I got a problem with that. And Pontiac has to get a, I, 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 I love, I go to work there. That's not the problem. The problem is, we should have never acquired it with nothing. Why? If somebody give me something, don't you know something up to it? They just give you a building? How nice? I mean, really? I would give it away too. There's almost eight million dollars to fix that school before we acquired it. If the school district couldn't do anything, why the heck you think we could do something? Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Okay, uh, anybody else from the council? Madam Mayor?
Yes, I would like to add to this discussion, uh, some points. I might raise that help to clarify this. One thing, uh, the, remember, this was a school-owned property. The city never owned this. We acquired it as part of the Phoenix Center deal. So it's been sitting there vacant, uh, uh, blight on the community, um, much infested and, uh, with all this asbestos. So we are actually much benefited by the fact of having this taken off. So, we are actually much benefited by the fact of having this taken off our hands and having somebody else demolish it and bringing a tax-based, um, pilot to the city. One of the things that was pointed out to a number of people in planning commission other meetings is that we lack enough affordable housing for our citizens. Uh, and one of the things people were saying is there not enough choices, you know? Uh, and so that's one of the things that this brings, seventy-six affordable housing units, which we much need in the city. Uh, at, and I'm a taxpayer, um, and I pay lots of taxes for business and, so if that's a qualification to speak in terms of this, uh, this is a good deal for us taxpayers too, because it takes this hazard off of our hands and has somebody develop within something that's useful. It wasn't being, uh, it wasn't taxable entity when it was owned by the school district, it's not taxable, sitting there festering for years and years like it has been, but it will be taxable, it will be bringing, uh, bring benefit to the citizens who need affordable housing. And so when you look at the fiscal impact of it on the benefit to the city, as we have done, as we do for all these pilots and study that, this is a benefit to the citizens, to the taxpayers, to the city as a whole, and to the people who need, uh, safe, secure, affordable housing. So we did encourage that, and that's why we recommend that to the council, to vote for this project, rather than have this lighted property sit here on the landscape, uh, for more years.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Schramsky.
Well, I'm not totally against this, but it does seem like an awful long time, and I feel rushed, why was this brought to us so late? That we didn't get time to really look at this?
So, uh, two reasons and candor to the council, one is, Community Housing Network was doing their diligence to make sure that they had the, um, the structure to be able to do the deal, to make sure that the financing and the applications were prepared and ready. Uh, and the second reason is, uh, the administration itself was doing the same type of diligence, because it has been tied, as we've all acknowledged, it was, um, begrudgingly accepted by the city, but it was really forced to be accepted by the city in order to resolve the litigation that was with Charles Stevens. And so, in the course of doing our diligence, in the course of their doing their diligence, um, we got to this point. Could it have brought, been brought a little bit earlier? Um, I'll be honest with you, um, probably, but only a couple of weeks. And so, uh, my apologies on behalf of Community Housing Network and myself. The bottom line is this, is that, uh, listen, I, I don't own a house here, um, I do kinda pay taxes, because I pay rent and I have an office here, and I hope my landlord pays taxes here, I'm assuming they do. You know, this is a project that, that we have experience with Community Housing Network, they did Unity Park, they've done other projects in our city. This is one of the good, the good guys, these are the ones that we can trust that will do a project that turns into long-term homeowners and homeownership, and these people that come out of their projects, we know this because we have a track record with them. And the fact that we got stuck with this six hundred dollar tab from Charles Stevens, God bless him that he's gone. And now we've got a place that we can say, you know what, we're replacing that equity to the city, we're getting it dollar for dollar back. If anybody were to come in, if it's this year or next year, or two or three years or four years from now, which is very likely would be several years from now, they're gonna ask you for the same thing, they're gonna ask you for a payment in lieu of taxes, to do a misdeaf finance project. Well, it's gonna be at least forty, I can guarantee you it's gonna be at least forty. Mr. Felton presented to you last week that, that they, the reason it's forty-seven, they've added two years because of the diligence um, that they have to do to, to convince the state to do this project. We just did forty years for Carriage Circle, this is just the way of the world right now, I apologize to everybody, it just, it is, we're going to do these types of projects where we take severe blight. My recommendation is, and I say let's, I'm here too, man, I, I, I have an office here, and I, I, you know, I'm, I'm here, let's take the money, let's work with this and get rid of the blight, take the benefit of a community building within seventy-six affordable housing units, and the fact that that CHN has done beautiful work in this city, one of the few, I'll be very honest with you, that has done timely and beautiful work in the city. Um, I just, I really encourage you to, to, to look at this project of, this continues to wash away the frustration over Charles Stevens and that whole deal, get our money back and move forward with them. To do that, it would require to, um, a public hearing to consider the option before the first, um, and that's what they're requesting. So, and they asked me to speak on their behalf, and that's why I'm speaking on their behalf.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Uh, let me, um, cause I haven't spoke on this, let me kinda clarify a couple of things that you guys are, um, mixing together, that's probably not helping the applicant. Carriage Circle, uh, is a property of the Housing Commission, which used to be the city. If we had to give them a hundred years to clean up that building, we would have gave them a hundred years to clean up, uh, Carriage Circle apartments. So that, that's just, let's just take that aside altogether. And, uh, then they worked it out where they didn't have to get our CDBG funds in order to do that. So I wanna clean up, that's a property that helped out and did stuff. Community Housing Network has been a good partner, when you start talking about homeownership in the city, that's a beautiful thing that they were able to do. But now we're talking about rental property, and we're talking about seventy-six units that are concentrated. And when you start talking about concentrated poverty, you have to have some other external factors to make sure that that property is good. I've got the Wolda property that's being built on paddock, that's beautiful, right? But I've also got some apartments that the city won't go in and inspect that are flooded, and they are pilot properties also. And so when we start talking about bringing housing, why are they coming to Pontiac, and why are they coming to this specific location, is what you have to ask. And so one of the questions and concerns, when my colleagues say forty-seven years, is because the city hasn't had clawbacks on pilots since we had them. And so nothing against Community Housing Network, we just feel in general, and I, well, I speak for myself, and then if, if other colleagues disagree, they can say whatever they disagree with. The problem is, the city has not safeguarded itself, and that's why we have on our agenda today, a street that we've been, uh, plowing and paving for fifty years, that we didn't know that we had gave up ownership of. It's all about crossing the i's and dotting the t's. So the question is, is this Purdue School project a good project for that land? I also wanna speak to the Phoenix Center deal. The reason that the school was included is because the man was trying to get rid of all of his property before we went back to court. This was not the end-all and be-all of any properties, but it was much cheaper to do the twenty million dollar deal than do the fifty or sixty million dollar deal that we had got into, because we kept on taking the man to court and losing. So I just wanna clarify that for the record, so we can kinda separate that out. Now, what happened after that with the subsequent deals is something different that I voted against. But what I wanna say is, we need to take this property with Community Housing Network and look at it on its own merits. Is that good for the Purdue site or not, and that's what people have to evaluate. It's forty-seven years, way too long, I think we need to take that down, uh, to forty, and then there needs to be something that says that after twenty years, it needs to be evaluated, or whatever, that needs to make that whole or happening, because you can't just give away your property indefinitely, and that was the major problem with the Phoenix Center deal, was it was a ninety-nine-year lease. So I wanted to say that and clarify, because I think Mr. Gibbs being zealous to try to, uh, help Community Housing Network is actually bringing up some bad memories of some other properties that we've dealt with, that is not helping this individual case. So, what I'm asking my colleagues to do today is to decide on, is this a good look for this property, uh, that you see in the city with seventy-six units? Are they a good community partner, and is it worth extending the pilot or something else to them? What they're asking for today is, if we wanna sell them the property for six hundred thousand dollars. And so I just wanna be clear on what it is today that we're asked to vote on, and then everything else flows out of that. So, uh, I would ask to suspend the rules and vote on item number eight, because if item number eight is a mute point, and people say notice, uh, scheduling a public hearing for the property, we don't have to hear these other four or five items. So is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Support.
Okay. We, 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 we can, but we're only on item number six right now. So, yeah, so I would, we have to suspend the rules to go up in the agenda, so that's the only reason. So it's been moved and supported to suspend the rules, roll call.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Petola? Schramsky? Taylor Burks? Waterman? Williams?
Yes.
Seven yays, no names.
Okay, which brings us to item number eight, which is a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the sale of Purdue School located at twenty-five South Sanford to Community Housing Network for six hundred thousand dollars.
So, 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 so what need to determine what date you're setting the public hearing for? Cause the resolution is to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, they need to have it by the first, so that would have to be Thursday. It would have to be, uh, Thursday at ten o'clock.
So.
Will it be published by then?
I can publish it to, if you take the vote today, I can publish it tomorrow. I mean, it would be published on Thursdays in time for the, the vote. So I'll send it to the, the printer tomorrow.
Okay.
Will it be published in time for us to have it at ten o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. I need a move and support?
So move.
Just move by Petola, supported by Taylor Burks?
Can you, can you, excuse me, can you just restate the date and the time in that you're voting on?
Resolution to schedule a public hearing for the sale of Purdue School located at twenty-five South Sanford to Community Housing Network for six hundred thousand dollars, Thursday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one at ten AM. At the Robert, uh, Bowen Senior Center.
Question, Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, this is discussion time.
Yeah, for the clerk, uh, the, which paper will it be advertised?
Do the President the Oakland Press.
Any discussion? CNN roll call?
Miller? Petola?
Yes.
Schramsky? Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
No.
Four yays, three names.
Okay, motion passes to schedule the public hearing for Thursday. Okay, which brings us back to item number seven, cause that has to be published.
Council President, just a clarification through the clerk, or through you to the clerk. Clerk Doyle, I didn't understand when you said that the first reading was held, but then it wasn't published. And I, the city attorney, Bostic, and I are just confused as to like the procedural status of that, and item number six.
So, uh, do the President, first readings do not ha, council does not have to take formal, a formal vote on first readings. They just simply have to have a first reading, I have to publish the ordinance summary before they can actually adopt the ordinance. So I published the ordinance summary, going back to the water ordinance, I did not publish the ordinance summary for this ordinance, because the public hearing had not been set. I can now, um, I now will publish the ordinance summary, and they can take a vote on the ordinance. I was about to ask, the President, do you want the, is the, guess who, does the ordinance need to be adopted before October first as well?
No, we're, no, they, they don't have to have the pilot before October first, they have to have the pilot as part of their financing package. And, um, I'm not ready to vote on the pilot, just because we're scheduling a public hearing, that doesn't mean that the people are in agreement of even selling them the school. So, I just wanna put that out there, we're having a meeting Thursday for them to do it.
Council President, that is, a, a, an excellent, um, kinda summary of it, and, and Community Housing Network is fine, if it goes in its regular course, we don't need to rush the pilot.
Okay.
So how are you going to dispose of number six?
So I will, uh, publish the ordinance summary, and then it'd be on the, um, well, next week is not a formal meeting.
Correct.
Two weeks from today, it could be the.
The twelve, is that the twelve?
Yes, yes, October twelfth.
So, is, uh, number nine gonna be, uh, attached to that as well?
That would be my, that you would.
Yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't vote on any of these.
Nine. And, and I think it's also.
And nineteen.
Nineteen.
Yeah.
Yes, so that you wouldn't take votes.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's no need of changing the zoning for a property that they don't own. So, uh, okay, um, so, item number six, item number nine, and item number nineteen will be on the agenda in two weeks, which brings us to item number seven, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. This item was discussed, um, last week, um, just to recap, uh, Mr. Huth has resigned as legal advisor. Um, I'm recommending, um, Davis Listman, uh, Robert Davis, um, attorney of Davis Listman, to be the new legal advisor, um, to the city clerk.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move, but, Mr. President, why is the attorney standing, why are you standing?
Hey, go ahead, Mr. Bostic.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, I just wanted to advise the President and the council that if there are any questions regarding the materials that were provided last week by Attorney Chubb, I can address those now.
Materials about what?
Stuff that I removed, it's done.
That's all.
That's it.
Well, we need a support. Okay, it's been moved by Waterman, supported by Petola. Any city council discussion? CNN roll call?
Petola?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Seven yays, no names.
Okay, brings us to item number ten, resolution to approve a contract between the city and Rightway Remediation LLC to provide asbestos abatement services for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG clearance and deli, uh, demolition of batch seventeen properties not to exceed ninety-three thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, I'll take the move from Petola, supported from Waterman, any city council discussion? CNN roll call?
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks? Waterman? Williams?
No.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Petola?
Yes.
Four yays, three names.
Okay, motion passes, which brings us to item number eleven, resolution to approve a contract between the city and International Construction to provide demolition services, CDBG clearance and demolition of batch seventeen, uh, properties not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Petola, is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Okay, motion, uh, dies, uh, thank you, Mr. Wilson, for being here tonight. All right, we're gonna move on to item number twelve, resolution to approve agreement between the city and Asphal Specialist Inc. for two million ninety-six thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars and zero cents for the two thousand twenty-one local street improvement project. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Uh, CNN roll call?
Waterman?
Oh, wait a minute, hold it. Is this the one, okay, all right, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Petola?
Yes.
Schramsky? Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Seven yays, no names.
Okay, brings us to item number thirteen, resolution to support application for Transportation Alternative Program Grant through Michigan Department of Transportation, MDA, or Gillespie Avenue, over Clinton's River Bridge Superstructure Capital Prevention, ma, preventative maintenance. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Move.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN, roll call?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Peta La?
Yes.
Stramski?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yeah.
Waterman?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Okay, motion passes, which brings us to item number fourteen, resolution to approve a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two to allocate, and this needs to be changed.
Yes, yeah.
So, Mr. Clerk, uh, the language needs to be, uh, resolution to approve a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two to allocate a total of one point two million dollars and zero cents for construction and engineering services to come out of the general fund.
Hold on, Council President?
Yes.
I believe, just to clarify, and Mr. um, Tadeke can clarify it, so I believe that the packet was updated to have the new resolution, which actually is a million fifty.
Okay, that's even better.
Is that correct or not correct?
Right, so it was a, a million fifty for the, uh, for the major roads, plus a hundred ninety thousand for the general fund for CDBD projects.
So maybe if the...
So one point, one point two four million total, sorry.
Correct, yeah, if Mr. Clerk might want to read the, uh, revised resolution.
So... Actually, what needs, needs to occur is for the notice to be published, the notice that's to be published, that's for the budget.
Okay, awesome.
Um, amendment, so you...
Can you read what you're publishing, Mr. Clerk?
The, a resolution to approve a budget amendment for fiscal year, year twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Excuse me, uh, uh, people in the audience, can, uh, you, uh, please? Thank you.
So, resolution to approve a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one in twenty-twenty-two to allocate a total of one million two hundred forty thousand for engineering service, one million fifty thousand, um, for major streets engineering services, and one hundred ninety thousand for general fund engineering services for community development block grant project. So I will actually have to publish...
I don't, I don't think that's what we talked about at that show.
So, Mr. Clerk, you have the revised, the correct resolution in the packet?
Right.
Right, that's what I was reading.
Are you, that didn't sound the same.
I said...
We, we had discussed... So, go ahead. So the million fifty in the major roads fund,
Mm-hmm.
plus the hundred ninety thousand for the CDBD projects.
Right.
Right, which is in the general fund, engineering services.
But he had another million in there.
No.
It sounded like he didn't have enough...
Oh, did he say a million? Okay, I'm sorry.
Repeat, Mr. Doyle, what you said.
So, what, what is it? I don't know if these two add up to, uh...
It's a million two...
It's the one million two hundred and forty.
Exactly.
Together.
So one million fifty plus one hundred ninety thousand equals one million two hundred and forty thousand.
But actually, these would need to be two separate, um, notices, because they're two different budget amendments. So I have to publish them as the one million fifty and the one hundred ninety thousand, separately, yeah, because they're separate accounts.
Okay.
So the one point two four is here, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to, for the clerk to publish?
Move.
Support.
All right, any discussion? CNN, roll call?
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Peta La?
Yes.
Stramski? Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, seven yeas.
Okay, item number fifteenth is a, uh, resolution to approve nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars contract amendment for the Oakland County Sheriff to provide funding for seven additional deputy sheriffs to the city's current contracted staffing levels. Is there a motion?
Move. Support.
I'll take the move from Waterman, the support from Peta La, any discussion? Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'm, I'm sorry, you asking when, when we expect to have them? Um, uh, the most recent update that I've received from the Oakland County Sheriff is that they're going through the recruiting process, that, you know, as part of, um, what's needed in order to get, uh, deputies on the street, they're having to hire new deputies. So they're, they're currently in the recruitment process. Um, so, uh, they would be recruiting and training them, um, in order to get them onto the streets. N- I don't have a, a specific date.
Councilwoman Miller, I did talk to the captain, and he stated to me that they're in the process, and, and there should be something by November, no later than December.
Okay.
You have some big time problems.
Mr. President, uh, if I can, um...
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Speak on that too, to Councilor Miller. Uh, I'm gonna be frank with you, Councilor Miller, it's not their fault. So I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that, and then I'll talk to you off course about why it's not their fault. But they are moving forward to get those deputies on the road.
Mr. President, if I may?
Okay, just briefly, I mean, we're...
It'll be brief. I don't know if anybody has seen the news last night, but there's a difficulty in hiring any of the first responders. They are not applying for jobs like they have in the past. And currently, our captain is looking for people, or the sheriff department is looking for people who meet the qualifications, have the background checks, and then they also have to go through the training, because you can't just give somebody a gun and tell them to go patrol Pontiac, because they're crazy over there. I mean, we all have to be diligent in our duties, and we want respectable people on our streets, because they have to deal with our residents. So there is no rush, but the captain did tell me he, that no later than December. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. President, Mr. Carrington, um, thi- this is my concern, I've been in City of Pontiac all my life, since I was five. So I've been here all my life. And I'm not blaming anyone necessarily, but all I'm stating is that we are sitting here getting ready to vote for them to get the money, but yet still, they can't contact us and tell us who we're supposed to get the people. I'm not blaming anyone, but it's just, it's just business. The city is suffering right now, we need someone. I understand where you're coming from, but I initially think they should have spoken that. That's all I'm saying, they should have told us, oh, we can't get them until November, December, because speeding in this city is, I think most people in the audience can attest to, is out of control, almost got ran off the street the other day.
Part of this, the mayor allowing people to come and drag race.
Councilwoman Miller had the floor, and then we're going to go.
Can I call for the vote?
But, uh, anyway, Mr. Carrington, I'm not, uh, it, so I'm, I'm holding everybody accountable for it, because the citizen, I work for them, and it's bad, and I'm gonna be honest, it's unacceptable to November, December. Because if somebody got on the street, then we're gonna say, oh, my God.
And, and, I mean, certainly, um, you know, from the administration is speaking on behalf of the sheriff, you know, um, you know, I think everyone had every intention of trying to do this as quickly as possible. Uh, once the budget was approved, we communicated that to Oakland County so that they could take the necessary steps through the county commission. Um, we've gotten the contract amendment, um, and we'll certainly continue to make sure that we communicate that and move that along as quickly as possible. Uh, but as others have, have alluded to, there, there's just certain, um, you know, impediments that the sheriff is running into. There's, uh, other departments that are trying to hire, so there's, you know, just, there's a greater demand than ever, and less supply than ever, was the message that, uh, Captain Ewing had communicated to me.
Okay.
It's just the reality of the situation.
All right, roll call?
Yes.
Peta La?
Yes.
Stramski?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
No.
Six yeas, one nay.
Okay, resolution to accept and approve the Oakland County twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Auto Theft Prevention Subgrant Recipient Agreement with the City of Pontiac, and authorizes the administration to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there support? Moved and supported, any discussion? CNN, roll call?
Peta La?
Yes.
Stramski?
Yeah.
Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Okay, which brings, uh, motion passes, which brings us to item number seventeen, resolution to approve hazard pay for essential and non-essential workers. Councilwoman Waterman had a correction.
President, in the resolution, it should not be coming out of the CARES Act month in the Finance Subcommittee. We agreed that these, uh, fees will come out of the general fund.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes, Attorney Sheriff.
Just a quick question, and maybe this is the clerk and Mr. Carrington, does this, do you have to have a, uh, budget amendment? Does, does this have to be published? Mr. Clerk?
The, um, President, I guess I would have a question for, Mr. Carrington, is there enough money in the general fund budget to cover this, or will it require a budget?
Yeah, it, it was certainly would, I mean, we have, we currently have funding available since we're at, you know, the first half of the, um, fiscal year, but we will need in order to get through, um, the, the, the fiscal year as funded. I believe we projected this to be an additional hundred thousand dollars, so we would, um, we would, and, uh, you know, we would be requesting a budget amendment, uh, in order to add the additional funding that these payments would, would be taken out, what's already been appropriated.
Okay, so...
I was just gonna say, uh, the funds are there, so it doesn't sound like, uh, you'd have to do it, so I wouldn't do it. And I would just indicate that obviously that amount is a one, one oh one four twenty-nine, based off of the information that we got last week.
S- s- so we're, do the President, we're amending the, the resolution, so therefore the City of Pontiac workers we provided with hazard pay from the...
General fund.
General fund.
For the total of one oh one four twenty-nine.
I'm sorry, what, do the President, what was that?
The total is one oh one four twenty-nine.
Okay, are you set, Mr. Clerk?
Hmm.
Okay, roll call?
Uh, we need, we didn't have a move.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh. It was Waterman, it was the clerk.
Support, I did.
Sorry, any discussion?
I do have one, Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, I mean, I, I totally disagree with it, because, uh, at the same time, the CARES Act one and two also had the funding mechanism to give to the essential employees, this goes back over, over you, this goes back almost two years. And just to go ahead and pick people from, uh, from a small time, between March and March of last year and June of this year, it's not correct.
But that, that time period is to reflect the, um, you know, a large part of the, the pandemic, namely when the city declared and ended its, uh, state of emergency.
I understand, when the CARES Act came out in twenty-nineteen, it, it, it was already mandated already that the essential workers already had allocation within it. So we, either we need a fiscal audit real quick for CARES Act one and two, if it didn't cover that, that was one remaining thing, it should have covered. So this should be the third time the essential employees would have dipped into the pot. Thank you.
No, and, and that, that's, um, you know, I, I know that point has been raised before, but that's not just an accurate reflection of, of, uh, what happened. There was no, uh, essential, you know, money that was provided for essential workers that the city took and did not pay, that, that...
Then there had to be a reason why.
Any CARES Act that the city received, uh, has been, or would have been allocated as, as was, was indicated, uh, and the city did not receive, I wasn't here at that time, but the city did not receive, or I reviewed that, the city did not receive money specifically for essential workers, uh, that the city failed to pay, pay out to those, to those workers.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're gonna call them. Okay, roll call?
Stramski? Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Peta La?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Congratulations to all our hard-working city employees that worked during the pandemic. Brings us to number eighteen, resolution regarding, uh, acceptance of quick, uh, claim deed for Racer Properties LLC for its half of a vacated portion of Hollywood. Is there a motion to vote on this item?
So move.
Is there a support? All right, it's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Peta La.
Mr. Counselors, would you please explain what a yes vote is and what a no vote is?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, members of council, Madam Mayor, a yes vote would be to accept the deed from the racer trust. A no vote would be to not accept the deed from the racer trust. And as we discussed in the study session last week, uh, the city accepting the deed without the companion property to the west, the west half of Vacated Hollywood Street would create a liability to the city. And I was asked last week by, uh, Councilwoman Waterman whether we're not, I would accept the deed if I was in your shoes, and my answer was no, then, and it remains no today.
Okay, any other discussion? CNN, roll call?
Taylor Burks? Waterman?
No.
Williams?
No.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Peta La?
No.
Stramski?
No.
Zero yeas, seven nays.
Okay, motion fails, um, which brings us to closing comments. Uh, Madam Mayor, you have three minutes.
Yes, I'll be happy to start out, and first I want to recognize the fact that one of our heroes and most renowned citizens, Hubert Price Junior, who is deceased, uh, was honored with the commemoration of the plaque, uh, renaming the, uh, Mill Dan at Voted Partners Honor that happened today. Uh, and I want to, just want to recognize, uh, that very appropriate commemoration for a very important citizen of our town. Uh, next, I wanted to, uh, tell you about Morta Bella. Uh, we had that brought, the City of Pontiac with, uh, much fanfare, a lot of people came and got to see the experience of that show. Uh, and, uh, the headlines all said Pontiac had a chance to shine. I was also very glad that it brought a lot of people to town. In fact, Saturday evening, I was, uh, around our downtown and saw that there was no less than seven of our eateries and places downtown that had live entertainment. So what we have been trying to do makes Pontiac a destination city and bring life to our downtown, we're really seeing the results of that. Also, uh, the attorney did rise to speak to, uh, that agenda item, uh, brought by the city clerk, uh, and that was agenda item, uh, seventeen, seven, I'm, seven. Uh, the attorney didn't get a chance to speak, he would have told you about the report that he had, uh, been trying to present, uh, to let, uh, the, uh, people who have applied for medical marijuana licenses, as well as others, to know about the status under view, uh, so he wasn't able to do that for you. I will do that as a PSA, uh, which we will announce, uh, Friday, the time of that, uh, because there are some, um, uh, investigation that had gone on that, uh, results of that, the city attorneys have been working with the inner clerk. Uh, there are some things that need to be done to make sure that this is a process, uh, that is free of conflict, free of taint. Uh, and so I will do that, so the citizens will know the actual status of the review process, the medical marijuana process here in the City of Pontiac. Uh, and last thing I would like to say, as many of you have been, uh, wondering when we're going to start the town halls about the American Rescue Plan money, the thirty-seven point, uh, eight million dollars that's come to the city, uh, that I want the citizens to have a chance to have some engagement, community engagement. Uh, and so we've scheduled, uh, six town halls, the first one will be October the eleventh. Uh, one of the town halls will be directly about, uh, smart city infrastructure. Another one will be for nonprofits who have, uh, eligible activities they want to talk about, and one will be hosted, uh, by Oakland University as a partner. So we'll be getting that information out, I want every citizen who wants to have a partner to say so, and how this money is spent, uh, to have a chance to do so, so we'll be sending out notices, beware, and watch for those in the near future. And have a good evening.
Mr. Dora?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, I was not gonna have, uh, closing comments until the mayor made her closing comments. So in response to the mayor's, uh, closing comments, um, just to keep the, the record in essence straight, this process has been totally transparent and fair. I provided a response to the, uh, city attorney last week. The two items were removed from the agenda. But I will, um, make sure that my response is public and also provide my own public service announcement to the citizens so that the citizens are clear about the process and what actually is going on. As the, the voters approved the ordinance, ordinance twenty-three fifty-seven B, which gave this responsibility to the clerk, um, throughout this entire process, I wanted to make sure that in its essence is transparent. And I would just simply encourage the mayor to appoint the commission. So where the process can come to an end, but I will provide my own, um, response to the public to make sure that the public is straight. I don't want the public to be tainted with misinformation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Attorney Sharp.
I don't have anything. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Sharamski.
Well, I have a lot to say, but I don't think I will. Uh, I, I did go to the dedication for the dam and Hubert, for Hubert Price this morning. Um, and the, my uncle and aunt went to school with Hubert and Walter Moore. And my, um, uncle was always excited, you know, who, who's gonna be at the reunion and who's going? And I'd run into Hubert off and on at the store and at the bank over the years and we'd talk. And when reunion time would get close, he'd say, is Uncle Jan coming? And I'd say, yeah, he's coming. And, uh, so the last reunion they had, um, before he passed away, they sat at Hubert's table, my aunt and uncle did. And so he comes home, he says, yeah, I talked to Hubert. He just liked to razz Hubert. And, uh, they were both friends with him in school. And, but the one thing that my uncle always said, but boy, his wife is wonderful. So that was his way of, you know, razzing Carolyn. I shared that with her, I mean, razzing Hubert to see how wonderful his wife was. And she is. And so, good evening.
All right, Councilwoman Petola.
Everybody, um, we've had a lot of racing going down Caesar Chavez. And, you know, we really didn't seem to notice so much of the racing until we started allowing racing on Woodford. So that's why I made the comment when we were talking about deputies. The, the problem is, is it's being allowed by our administration to happen in the city. And then it just continues because if you allow it, why can't we do it in our own neighborhoods? I mean, and it's, it is terrible. We had people that died on Oakland Avenue this year because of racing, because they had alcohol and because they went off on the FIDOC and they died. And if we didn't allow this with our smiles and how wonderful it is that Pontiac is coming back to life and we're on the map, that's good. We can come back to life and we can be on the map. But let's do it legally. Let's not turn around and tell everybody you can drive how you want to because we condone it. And then the two weeks later, three weeks later, five months later, they're still racing down the streets. Our deputies are strung out and they cannot, they do not have the manpower to stop everybody riding down the road because we also have other issues called guns. And we do have to look at that and we're waiting. And I, I know you're impatient, Gloria, and I would be too, but you and didn't really talk to them and understand what's going on. But we have it with all three public safety departments as far as a lack of hiring. But when we have administrations that's approving it, I can't say it's okay. Um, with that, I want to say hi to, to Tanya and I want to say hi to Scooter because I seen you both today and you didn't think I was gonna do this. So everybody, please have a wonderful safe week and we will see you next Tuesday. Thank you.
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
I'm concerned about him here because I know what's gonna happen because I keep seeing it. Uh, as probably as well as you, I'm very close to my constituents and on the ground a lot. They're suffering out here. And, and I, I'm not, I don't want to put the blame on anyone. I just, we just need help. And you know, I agree with you. I was riding down Woodward yesterday and I was coming from Detroit on Woodward. And you get to Pontiac and our street's burnt up. It's burnt up. That's because we allow it. People think that we trashy. Because we allow it. No, I'm gonna put that back. The citizens don't run the city. The administration do. We just go put the blame where they. They run it. Because if I go out and burn my tires, police catch me, they gonna put me in jail or give me a ticket. This is unacceptable behavior. I agree with you. I totally agree with you. There's another issue I got in my district and I said, I'm gonna, I'm speaking very publicly about him here. And as in my district is over on Bay Street in University. That corner is just a car lot, okay? A car lot. They fixing on cars. That neighborhood is too nice, too extravagant to have this stuff going on over there. I had it. They've been to Black Court. They said they weren't gonna do it anymore. It's back. Every day I pass by there, it's there. Twelve eighty University. I'm putting it out there. The neighbors over there are just sick about this. Cars all up down the street, they working on vehicles. And I'm not gonna blame code enforcement because when you go to Black Court, I don't know what's going on. They went there once with this guy. Now, just like you said, Mayor, they see him working on cars. Now we got it on the other side. Now we got it across the street, working on cars. It's a disaster. Please send your code enforcement over there and shut them down. If not, I'll protest. I'll get out there and put signs. People are tired of living like this and then they're trying to put a tax on these nice homes. And you come up and you just move in the neighborhood and you fix it on cars. Get your business and go and, uh, make a living, but not next door to people like this, Mayor. This is unacceptable. And I'm just, I could put it out there. I'm not afraid. I'm just tired of riding that, by there and looking at this stuff. These are very nice homes with people, they're fixing on cars there. So I'm asking you, ask code enforcement, please do something. Because right by the alley, you're still, up in the street. Totally disrespect, just with the Black Court. Said he weren't gonna do it anymore. Yes, who are. Then he got his neighbors across the street, now they fixing tires. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm done.
Bro, Tim Carter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and, uh, uh, Dr. Lee, she's my doctor anyway. Uh, we've been having that problem. Uh, that place caught on fire on August the twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen. I checked my notes. Used to be formerly Liberty Tax. It's either, I don't know any way to say it. It's either a, a, a pay to play or somebody is, it's a friend and family plan. That building burnt down. There's no reason for it to be there. It's inaccessible for anyone to walk down the sidewalk for a half o'clock. And, and for the fact that, that that gentleman built that multi-million dollar gas station next door, he complains to me all the time, why do I allow it? It's not that I allow it. I done reported it pretty much every week. It goes to code enforcement, it goes to building safety. So what I do start tonight, I just go through and make sure that I send it directly over to the mayor because all these people are, work directly to the administration. We have no authority to, to make them do anything. Uh, that's where it lies. Uh, uh, Julie, about the drag race on Highwood? Yes, I understand. And we had spoke about it. There, Highwood is interesting that for some reason that they've got a single, uh, speed sign on that street. It's been knocked down by all snowplow trucks for years. So when the police come, the police come and said that I would like to give them a ticket for ten or fifteen over the speed limit. So it's necessary for the city to go to east and west Highwood and put speed signs up so when Oakland County goes over there, they can give them a ticket for, for X amount of miles over greater than the speed limit. With that, uh, I want to say, everybody, thank you and good night.
Councilwoman Taylor Burks.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hold the microphone close to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, uh, I am, um, happy right now because they have started working on Glenwood Plaza. And they have cleaned, they are cleaning it up. They have one section, uh, that they've cleaned up. Um, and, um, getting, it's just this one, uh, business, not everybody, just this one business. But I am very happy that they are over there. They are cleaning it up because, uh, I am planning to have something for the kids. Uh, and, uh, and so I appreciate that, uh, very much that they are over there, uh, trying to clean it up. It's looking but much better than it was looking. And, and, um, I am, um, very happy about it because it's been so much naysay talk that they are not gonna do nothing, don't need nothing over there. Let it sit there, uh, like it is. Uh, but there are people that live near there also and they want something nice to look at. So I, I prayed about it, prayed about it, I cried about it. God is moving and, and I thank him for what he is doing over there. Because who in their right mind would say that we don't deserve a grocery store? That's crazy as far as I'm concerned. So, um, I am very happy about that. And, um, I just wanted to, um, let everybody know that, uh, don't believe the lies. Don't believe the lies. It's all about me. If I wasn't running, those lies wouldn't be told. So I'm just letting you know what's going on. So I would like to leave you with this. Life is too precious. Do not destroy it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Water.
Evening and thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've been sitting here.
Hold on, before you get started, I don't think your microphone is on. Can you switch mics with Dr. Taylor?
Hello?
There you go.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. President. Thank you. You know, I've just been sitting here and I'm looking around. And about two weeks ago, this room was filled. And there was an uproar about comments that were made about the people in this city by a person who is financially benefiting from this city. So I sit here and I say, am I the only one offended by what happened? Because if I'm the only one to have to fight for the rights of what's going to happen about people who come into this city. Because I hear you, Councilwoman Miller, when you state and say, you know, we live in this city and we should do better and have better. Well, I feel that we should have better because see, I came and sat on this council twelve years ago when the emergency manager was here and we had absolutely nothing. We have fault, fault for the rights to bring this city back up to where it's at. And I am not going to allow any business person, anybody who's trying to run for a seat to come and bring this city back down. Watch the hype that's going on around, out, out here. The promises that are being made. Make sure we hold their feet to the fire because this is our city. Yes, I will be walking away, but I will still live in this city and I demand respect for this city. So there are four, uh, words that I want you to take and I want you to look them up and digest them and say. What is a moral compass? Think about it. Integrity. Think about it. Character versus reputation. Think about it. Respectability. Pontiac deserves respectability. I can go on, but every two weeks I'm gonna have more to say to you. But I just want you to think about those four things that I just brought to you. And in closing, I want to, um, say I truly was honored to, to be today at the dedication ceremony for the late Hubert Price. He was a man of many words, as everybody said there. He loved this city. He truly loved this city. And what more befitting an honor is to have a dedication for him today. And I was so glad to have to been a part of that. And I also want to thank, um, Karen and Rob from the plaque. You know, they're downtown business and they are bringing things to this city and we need to participate with them. They had our own Mr. Jefferson play down there. That play should have been standing room only. They brought a, he brought a world.
That's your, that's your time. I'll let you go an extra twenty seconds.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I know you're retiring. I know you're retiring, so I gave you an extra twenty. Um, good evening, everybody. Good evening. Time has been well spent tonight. I, I just want to say this openly. I might not always agree, uh, with my colleagues, but I appreciate, uh, the time and effort and, uh, insight that you bring to sit, uh, on this dais. I don't think that that's been appreciated enough, um, since, uh, I've sat in this seat uh, just to hear the different points of view, uh, as we get these things together. And about two weeks ago, I got a threatening, uh, email, uh, from somebody who I didn't vote in their favor. And they told me that, uh, I was a kid in a candy store and I needed to do what was best for the citizens and not best for myself. And I said, okay, please don't text me on my personal number anymore. Here's my city number and you can use that, uh, going forward. But it was only because I said no. And if you don't have people that will say no to the wrong things, you'll end up with anything. The problem with the roadkill and the drag racing is not because industry is coming to Pontiac. It's because the industry is coming to play in Pontiac, but to go home to their communities where they won't allow it. It's a reason that you only see one drive-through all the way between Pontiac and Ferndale because that KFC was grandfathered in. But as soon as you hit Pontiac city limits, it's a world of difference. And so what I'm gonna ask this council to do before we leave is help work with some realtors and some business owners to get our code book together. Right now, the planning commission only has about two pages to look at. The city of Birmingham's is fifteen pages. Just to look at that in comparison. And so we don't have anything that says all the places on Woodward need to be brick. We just don't have those classifications. And so when they come in, the mayor and everybody else can only go by the rules that we've had presented. And so I think we should take a meeting because we took several meetings about weed. But just to take a meeting to say, what do we want the aesthetics of the city to look like going forward? Because what they're building in Stone, uh, Gate is because our code book didn't speak to not being able to build ranch houses. And so even though the citizens don't want it, they're coming. So I would just ask my colleagues to help me with that. And with that, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at seven forty-eight.